I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello?
Okay, hold on.
Okay.
This session of the Lincoln County Commission on February the 2nd, 2012 at 6:00 PM is now called to order. Ladies and gentlemen, it is Charles McCann, President, Charles Vance, Commissioner, and Thomas Ramey, Jr., Commissioner via telephone. First thing on the agenda, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular session of the Lincoln County Commission meeting that was held on January the 19th, 2012 at 10:00 AM.
So move.
Got a second, I'll say.
You have motion and second. In all yes vote, motion carries.
Next thing on the agenda is discussion of concern. We have Joe Stevens concerning the estate of Naomi L.
Lindell. Welcome, Joe.
Thank you.
Turn up the volume, please.
We don't have any volume. You can see up front, if you want to come up front.
First, Your Honors.
Yes? I'm driving to a bad area, so for any reason if I get cut off, just call me back.
Will do, thanks.
You're welcome.
I'm here in behalf of Morgan Lindell, and this matter regards the appointment of the personal representative in the estate of Naomi L. Lindell. The Commission made, and I think the Commission does know, that Naomi Lindell was the daughter of Buster Stowers, who previously was Commissioner of the Lincoln County Commission. I have not met, nor have I talked with Justin Pritt, I don't know if he's present here this evening, but I have a copy of a letter from him addressed to the Commission whereby he advised the Commission that he will be representing a John Lindell, and has moved the Commission to appoint John Lindell as the Administrator of the estate of Naomi Lindell. On behalf of Morgan Lindell, I would represent to the Commission today that we do not agree with that motion, and this afternoon I filed a petition that I think may have been provided to your honors that essentially sets forth the reasons why we object to the appointment of John Lindell, and we move for the appointment of Morgan Lindell as the Administrator. Now, I didn't know what the agenda for the Commission would be today. I don't want to, I want to give everybody the opportunity to be heard in this case, and I don't know what the Commission's pleasure would be about the matter, but I'm not trying to appear here today to exclude Mr. Pritt and give him the opportunity to be heard and have both sides of the issue heard by the Commission. So I don't know what the Commission's intention is regarding the matter, but I'm happy to go over the reasons why we believe that the best interests of Naomi Lindell's estate would be served by appointing her daughter as the Administrator, CTA of her estate.
Well, I don't know, we have a plan, I think, in making the agenda out and getting, preparing for the last meeting for this meeting, I felt like it was, you know, for you to be here, and then, of course, when I read the petition that you have applied here this evening and recorded in, it seems to me like, and it meets all the logical tests, I don't know whether we got a timeline or not, that we need to do something before the next meeting, which may be, what, 16th of February, but I don't see anything wrong with what we have before us here.
Well, and let me just briefly say that my involvement in this case came with regard to the estate of Ollie Stowers, who was Buster's widow, and why I got involved in the matter is because I think the Commission's probably very well aware of the fact that Buster Stowers owned numerous tracts of real estate in this county, and under the terms of his will, he devised everything to Ollie, and Ollie simply then devised everything to her three children. Now, Commissioners may also be aware that since the death of Buster and Ollie, they, their daughter Naomi passed away, and Naomi had one child with her husband Jimmy Lindell, and then they adopted their granddaughter, and it is, the daughter that was born to Jimmy and Naomi was my client Morgan Lindell, and Morgan actually was the daughter of Crystal, who was, it's a little bit complicated, but Crystal was born to, I'm sorry, to Naomi and Jimmy, and then Crystal had a daughter who is Morgan, and Naomi and Jimmy adopted her. Now, Crystal also had another daughter, whose name is Devon, and I appear really in her behalf today, so the bottom line is this, through all the complexities of this matter, it's our position that Devon, who's underage, and Morgan are the only heirs, only beneficiaries of the estate of Naomi Lindell. John Lindell, who made this motion, is a stepchild, and was the child of Jimmy Lindell from a previous marriage. We do not believe he has any standing in the matter, we were a little surprised that that motion was made. So I think there's every reason to appoint Morgan Lindell as the personal representative. In fact, when her mother, Crystal, passed away, she had a will nominated her daughter Morgan as executrix, and she has qualified and is the executrix of her sister's estate. So I think it's due course for the Commission to grant our motion to be appointed, they somehow got a little ahead of us and made the motion to appoint John Lindell, but I believe he has no standing to do that.
Hearing that, any other discussions?
No, I was just going to make comment after reviewing the petition, it seems to me like, as long as the petition is accurate, that this would be the common sense thing to do, and so, listen.
Well, I might point out that in the letter from Mr. Pritt, our attorney, there are grounds for objecting to Morgan serving as a personal representative with the fact that she's only 18, and may not be up to the job. Well, I've been the family's attorney and also Morgan's attorney throughout this matter, I think we can handle it. I don't think that objection's well founded.
Well, if we agree to adopt this petition and appoint her, then they certainly could go to a certain court and object to, before any action, estates and things like that.
I believe that's true, if they object to, but I think it's a discretionary matter with the court, but this is Buster Stowers' granddaughter, I think she is the person that ought to be serving in this matter, it really goes back to his estate.
Mr. Ramey, any concerns on your part?
No, I agree with everything that's been said, I just think it's a tragic state of events for all of those family members to have passed away in such a fast fashion between each other.
Okay, with those discussions, I would entertain a motion to accept this petition and appoint Morgan Lindell.
So move.
We have a second.
Second.
Motion is second. All yes vote, motion carries. And we'll communicate a copy of our letter to the other party, so they'll know what we have, please, your tonight.
Next thing on the agenda, we have Chris Pritt, the State of Pennsylvania.
Hello, Chris.
Hi, hi, Your Honor. Your Honors, my name is Chris Pritt, I represent Mr. Tommy McGrady, who's sitting right beside me there. I've been representing, or our office has been representing, Mr. McGrady in the Lincoln County Family Court for a couple of years now. What's going on is, he was legally separated from his wife, he was legally separated from her, and after the two were legally separated, he was ordered by the court to make alimony payments to her. That continued for, that started before we were on the case, and it continued even to this day. It was being collected through the Bureau for Child Support Enforcement through the state. Back in around the end of 2010, Ms. McGrady passed away. However, there, at that point in time, there was a bit of an arrears that was owed to Ms. McGrady. Now, what happened is, after that, she passed away, Mr. McGrady's daughter went and got appointed as the Administrator of the estate. We went before the Lincoln County Family Court, and the Lincoln County Family Court made the determination that no further alimony payments would be made, but at the same time, the Bureau would continue to collect through wage withholding, Mr. McGrady's past alimony that was owed. And that alimony is being collected to this day. As of today, roughly around $15,000 is sitting with the state of West Virginia. Okay? Now, the problem we're dealing with is that Ms. McGrady died without a will. We believe that based on West Virginia law, he would be entitled to any of that money that would be currently sitting with the state of West Virginia.
After all the bills are paid.
After all the bills are paid and everything. As, Mr. McGrady had spoken with someone at the Sheriff's Office, and he could elaborate on this if necessary, who indicated that these, this money was just going to be split between him and his daughter. We don't believe that that's the law in West Virginia, that any kind of money should go to Mr. McGrady, because of the fact that whenever his wife passed away, she was without a will, so anything that was, that is sitting with the state of West Virginia should be, should go to him, and so that's really where we are right now. We just asked for an order from the County Commission that, by the way, the Sheriff's Department is currently the Administrator of the estate.
Yes.
And Mr. McGrady doesn't have any issue with that, he just wants.
I think he agreed to that back earlier, I think.
Well, yeah, that might, I don't, I wouldn't part of that, that might be the case you're on, I could check with him on that, but the point is, he just wants to make sure that when this money is distributed, it's currently being taken out of his paycheck and going to the state of West Virginia, and it's, we believe it's around $15,000, or maybe more, maybe a little bit less, that's just sitting with the state of West Virginia. Now, we just want to make sure that, I mean, this estate's been going on since, you know, late 2010, he'd like it, he'd like it to be brought to a close, and he'd also like some form of order from the County Commission that indicates that this money is to go to him and not his daughter.
Okay, I agree that we need to get included, I think that, I will take this information, some of it I wasn't aware of, part of the continuous deductions, I thought maybe it depended on its cost, and get it to the prosecutor and provide new information of what he and I discussed, and what direction we're going to be there. Maybe at the 16th meeting, their next, our next meeting, that maybe we can have this issue put on the, on the agenda for action to resolve it, whichever way the prosecutor and the Commission.
Okay.
Or we do a copy, a thin letter, that you know about the meeting and what the issues are, so when you come, we'll know what's going on.
Yes, Your Honors, I'll be sure and get into touch with the prosecutor here in Lincoln County.
You know Jaffe, so you know, okay. All right, that's all we know, but.
Okay.
No action tonight, but we'll try to figure out what we want to do about it, we'll see what happens.
Okay, thank you, Your Honors.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Next thing on the agenda, we have Steve Rawlings with the West Virginia Department of Insurance Update.
Welcome, Steve.
Evening, Commissioners. Before I start and walk over to the lectern, I have a couple of things for you all that I'm going to go over this evening, and I will keep it, keep it brief. It's a little bit different, I actually have a handout this evening that I don't normally have, just kind of updated a little bit here, and then the other thing that I have for you is just a copy of your loss runs. And I've actually split those loss runs between both the property and casualty, as well as the workers' compensation piece. Again, good evening, I certainly appreciate you taking a few minutes of your time this evening to discuss the West Virginia County's risk pool. As you all are well aware, you all are members and owners of the County Risk Pool that provides you with your property liability, as well as currently now workers' compensation coverages. Tonight, just kind of wanted to briefly touch base with you all, remind you that it is kind of the renewal season of what we're doing when it comes to providing you with the coverage, and so we're actually in the process now of collecting updated information to be able to provide you with a renewal proposal for the upcoming year that will begin July 1st, 2012. What you have in front of you is a packet, and it's the Lincoln County Commission packet, that what I've done is just kind of create a synopsis and kind of a snapshot of the pool, where it sits now, where you sit, how things are going as well, and I won't go over word for word, obviously, but I would like to just kind of flip through each page and just kind of touch base on those. If you'll notice on the first page there, that shows the membership map and the participation in the program. As you can see, we are still a growing program, we have 36 County Commissions that participate out of the 55, so a little over 60% of the County Commissions participate in this program. Remember, you all are one of the founding members that joined in the very beginning of the, of the program itself, we certainly appreciate that. If you'll notice, the map itself is a little bit broken up there, from the perspective of, you have those that participate in both the workers' compensation and the property casualty, and then those, there are just two that do not participate in the, in the workers' comp piece. So by looking at that, we do have quite a bit of cooperation and participation. The next page, if you look at that, that just shows how the pool has grown, just kind of gives you a snapshot of what's happened since day one, and as you can see, it is continuing to grow, it's continued to, to increase participation as a whole. And then if you look at the third part there, workers' compensation. As you're well aware, when the pool first started, we proposed to well over 40 counties in the state, and 19 County Commissions, and then Lincoln County Commission joined in, joined the pool in the very first year, and so when we started with this workers' compensation piece, what we did was within our feasibility study, we expected to propose to a certain group, or we proposed basically to everybody, and then have a smaller group take, take us up on the program, because it was new, very similar to what we did with the property and casualty. As you can see, our target for critical mass was between 21 and 24 participants to pick up the workers' comp piece. I'm happy to say that I proposed to 34 County Commissions in the spring last year, inside of about six weeks, and 33 of the 34 joined the, joined the risk pool for the workers' compensation piece. That's not something we expected, so we're very pleased and we're very appreciative of those members that have done so, and then also we picked up one along the way. So we're, we're in really good shape as far as the workers' compensation is, and it is continuing to grow, and again, overall, providing protection to you, as well as your employees that perform duties for you as a Commission, as well as your elected officials. If you look at the next page, that shows your, that shows Lincoln County's property and casualty loss ratios. You're actually, you've, no losses the first year, and then you had a pretty significant claim the second year, where you had a 100% loss ratio, and then the following year, again, no losses, so it's kind of a, an up and down. This year, and then the following year, you had a, you had a 21% there, and then, and then right now you have 0%. So you're really, you know, when you start looking at what you have going on there, you've got some really good things going on as a whole, just that one anomaly is what we consider that to be, we don't consider that to be anything other than anomaly from this perspective, so we're certainly pleased to have Lincoln County as a member of the pool, and we look forward to, to continue to work with you. The next piece is the workers' compensation loss ratio, about where we stand. I think it's important to note that with where we stand with the loss ratio, as far as the 46% overall for the, for the complete membership, the near loss ratio being what it is, understand that that's actually, that's prorated, so I'm not prorating that against, I'm actually prorating that against what you have completely contributed to the pool, so you've contributed X amount, but I've actually taken out some of that, because we're not all the way through the year. So barring any incident, that, that ratio should come down, should come down some, but at the same time, you're going to have those incidents. With what you contribute to, to the workers' compensation element of the pool, it's pretty easy to get that. You have one knee injury, you have one, one individual who is out for a certain amount of time, it's pretty easy for that to happen, so we're not, we're not sweating that or anything at this point in time, but I did want to share that with you, let you see what that is, and we are working directly with those, with those individuals who are injured, as well as the supervisors, to make sure that they're getting what they need, as well as to hopefully get them back to work as soon as possible for, for everybody involved. A couple of things in specific to workers' compensation, and since you all have been part of the property and casualty piece for quite a while, I didn't really hit on this a whole lot, but the workers' compensation piece, as you know, we do have online filing, there are two state forms that are required, the OIC 1 and 2. When you actually file that form, when you actually file with us online, you're completing one of those two forms automatically, so you don't have to go back and do that, as well as we have some information that's available to your, to your employees when they report a claim. One of those things that we have is an express scrip, in fact, I was just stopped off with the Rite Aid down here, and I notice they still, they have a sign outside that they still take express scrips, because I know that them at Walgreens have got a little thing going on there, but, so it kind of reminded me, anyway, to bring that up, that if any of your, if any of your employees are injured and they are turning in a claim, they will get a form from us for an express scrip, and it's for free prescription fill, for the first fill that they're provided by their physician, that they force, that they see at that injury, so if it's a pain medication, or what that happens to be, and that is regardless of whether or not that is a compensable injury. If they go and they turn in a claim, and they go visit a physician, the physician gives them a prescription, they will automatically have a free, free fill regardless of whether or not we accept the claim. So that's something for them, they don't have to worry about any out-of-pocket that they may have had to worry about in the beginning, and then we would go forth with the rest of it as usual, but that is, that's something that we offer, that nobody else offers, that we're aware of. And then a couple of other things as far as the website, as you're well aware, the website is a, is used as a portal for information, we have updated it, we've relaunched it, and we've provided some additional information, such as some risk control support in there for training procedures, as well as some policies are actually included in there that you all can use, modify and implement. And then we also have the Tulip, the Tulip, which is a tenant users' liability insurance program, and there is an introduction as to what that is, in specific to having third parties using your property, what, what we recommend that they have as far as insurance to protect the County Commission from that perspective. So that's up and running, and then if you look at the next page there, and bring this to a close, the service and support, as you're well aware, that as far as from, from an adjuster for whether it's going to be the property and casualty, you have one assigned adjuster, so Ken Justice will always handle your claims, unless he's sick or out on vacation, he'll always handle that, you don't call into a bank of people, you don't call into somebody where you have to explain who you are, what you do, or what kind of entity you are. We only do counties and county-related authorities, so Ken knows who you are, he knows what's going on in the county as a whole, so he'll be able to service you better, and the same thing we've done with workers' compensation, which is Robin Morgan, and you'll always deal with Robin Morgan, she's always going to be the one who does your workers' compensation, so, so for example, if you have a deputy hurt today, he strains his knee, whatever it happens to be, and then six or eight months from now, he, you know, injures his shoulder and whatever reason, he's going to talk to Robin Morgan for the same thing, he's not going to have to worry about explaining who he is, or who he works for, at a different individual. So that's something that we do. We'll also do contract reviews, so if you have any contracts that the County Commission's getting ready to get into, from a, we'll look at it from a, a risk control perspective, we typically don't look at it from a legal perspective, but we will look at it and tell you if it's a good idea, we'll look at you and tell you that, you know, where your exposures are in that particular program, and so we can give you some insight on that. And then also some risk control information for, for law enforcement, and we work with that with automobiles, the liability piece, as well as the property piece, so we can work with the, with law enforcement officers on that directly. And overall, that's, that's some of the service and support we do, clearly that's not all of it, but to do that would take all night, and I know you don't have all night. And the last thing to really bring up, other than the last page, which has just contact information on there, is to remind you that this is your program, that you all own, the West Virginia County's Risk Pool, so you own equity in this program. Over the past several years, we've collected money and paid out claims, paid the administrative fees, paid the reinsurance for catastrophic loss, and we've been able to save, not just the counties that participate, but the counties in the state of West Virginia, millions of dollars over the past five years for, for creating this program, and for the participants as well, and the monies that's been left over belongs to you. It's not a profit to a state-run agency, it's not a profit to a commercial insurance provider, it's your money. With that said, every year we have actuarial reviews, we just received our audited financial figures, we have right at $1.7 million of money that's free and clear, that takes into account, we have other money set aside for other things, but the actuary has determined that we have about $1.7 million that we can do with as we wish, and as you all are well aware, we provided money back to County Commissions in the very first year for those who first participated, which was Lincoln County Commission, one of the County Commissions that did participate, you receive money back from the County Risk Pool that you would not have received from anyone else, just in the indication of some of the things that we do for you, because you all are owners and participants of the program itself. So what I wanted to do is leave that with you this evening. One last question, is that I've also provided you with a copy of your loss run, which shows you the claims that have come in, those claims go back to day one, and I've separated them for both workers' compensation and property and casualty, just because it's easier to separate that and see where the money's going. It's still the same pool, it's still all the same fund of money, if you will, but it's just easier to see what those are, and specifically talking about the workers' comp piece, you can easily see how that's happened as far as from that loss ratio, it's not an issue, we're not, there's, there's not any kind of a, a concern at this point in time from a membership perspective, in any way, shape, or form, just happens to be, you've had, you've had two incidents, one of them is a little more significant than the other, it's, I believe that's the knee injury. It is what it is, you know, those, those things are going to happen, hopefully we're here to help you and get that individual back to full performance as soon as possible. But what I wanted to do is ask if you had any questions, currently you can see you don't have any claims that are outstanding, they're all closed, we've all, we've taken care of all of that, and at this point in time, I'd like to turn it over to you for any questions or a conclusion.
I don't have any questions, I just think that the decision we made to work with the other counties with this risk pool is a proper decision, and it appears to me that we just need to make work a little closer, try and watch that ratio.
And we can help you do that, that's some of the risk control things that we do, and I can have a hands-on, you know, actions with that, so I can work directly with the departments that have an interest in having some risk control aspects, whether that's going to be, again, implementing some policies or procedures, whether it's doing some training programs, where I can do some hands-on training programs with them, all of those things are available, they're all included in the program, there's no cost of that, and we have both myself, as well as three other individuals, and we have, that can actually provide support for, for the counties in the program, and then they have a varied mixture of backgrounds from both law enforcement, there's two of us that have law enforcement backgrounds specifically, and I have that in the state, actually, so I can have, you know, some, some interaction with that as well, as well as we have an individual who's a 30-year risk manager at a large county, so we do have some resources for, for those that wish to have that involvement.
Yeah, just echoing that, I mean, I really get concerned about the charges, as far as workers' compensation charges and things like that, that's a, that could be a real, as you know, could be a real problem to get around, so, and if we're shareholders in this type thing as far as profitability, then, because I know one of the problems we had in working with Board of Risk Investment Management was those type things, as far as worker comp, the claims and the docs to take care of worker comp patients and things of that nature, and I know you all have a program to work with the injured person to get them back to work and things like that, but it's just something that we all need to kind of watch, I think, in, in handling these type things, that sometimes workers' compensation can cost us a lot more than we really anticipate sometimes, so.
That's true, absolutely, and we have a few things in, that we can certainly work with, as far as the establishment of the rules that are in place in West Virginia for the workers' compensation, we have nurse case managers that we can assign that will specifically work with them, so we have, we certainly have tools in place, as well as hopefully some of the risk control, which is the prevention of that to begin with, but certainly anything that we can do, as well as some of the reductions we're getting on the bills for the medical pieces, those are all coming into play, we'll hopefully, again, we feel as if these, these reserves are a little bit, a little bit high, or if you want to say, very conservative, so in the, in the long run, we don't necessarily expect that to be the total, it's, you know, that should be less than that, but right now we have a reserve at that level based upon where we feel that is, but again, those are very conservative, and we would expect that if it were to close out, or when it closes out, it will be less than that, that we spend.
Anything else? I appreciate it.
Commissioners, thank you very much, have a good evening.
Thank you for coming down.
Next thing on the agenda is written down. We have a presentation. He has a presentation.
Thank you. Real quickly, commissioners, I've got a new phase four tentative budget for you. Thanks. No problem. As you can see, we broke them all up there. The biggest number, obviously, is our construction cost for 606,000. That's going to give 18 new systems. I think that's 13 direct discharge and then five end grounds, hopefully. And then we also want to replace some components of some other systems that we are finding are not meeting our standards, so we have about eight replacements we'd like to do. Next big, real big one is just administrative fees for salaries and things like that. You know, we need supplies, equipment, mileage. And then contingency was the next big one on there, and contingency is just 5% of your construction costs. Also have a phase four tentative schedule. All eight, man. I unfortunately didn't include myself one in that, but as you can see, we've got that lined out there. Hopefully, we're going to finish by May, but let me say, it's tentative, so we're looking at getting all that stuff in. I know we've got some things by February we're going to have to complete. And then I'm going to turn it over here.
Rick McLeod for the fire works. Thank you.
Thank you. Maybe I'll just do a quick explanation of this thing, because I know we've got people in the audience who haven't been here before for some of this stuff. In 2003, the Lincoln County Commission was one of four places in the United States that the federal government gave a demonstration project grant to put in alternative wastewater systems. We've been working on it since 2005. All these have gone into the Left Fork of the Mud River watershed. And as Ryan mentioned, we're about ready to start the fourth phase of this product, project. At that point, we should have 101 homes in the Left Fork that have these alternative systems. These are septic systems, wastewater systems. The idea is by having better septic systems, we prevent contamination in the creeks and streams, and we also prevent contamination in groundwater so it gets into people's wells, which is not a very good thing to have happen. At the last meeting, I shared with the commission some problems we were having at one site with some concrete tanks. When we started the project, nearly all the tanks that went in, all the septic tanks and pump tanks were made out of concrete. In 2008, the commission required that all these tanks be inspected in advance on the prefabricator's lot where the tanks were made. We filled them with water to make sure they weren't leaking. If they were leaking, those tanks were not allowed in the project. Then in 2009, we were still finding some problems with tanks that even though they weren't leaking when we checked them, by the time they got into the watershed and again were filled with water for us to check, we found some leaks. All those happened to be with one company, W.J. Clark out of Barbersville, and the commission at that point said, "No more Clark concrete tanks in the project." And by the end of 2009, we moved to the point where we weren't putting any concrete tanks by anybody in the project. So the problems we're having now with concrete tanks are tanks that went in during Phase 1. Since the end of Phase 1, everything's been collapsed. And unfortunately, what we found is the tanks that are put in, were put in by Clark, were made by Clark, are just a mess. And so I told the commission I would share some photos, so I'm going to turn off the lights. And this is the evaluation that we've really been doing in the last probably six months. This is just pretty much what I talked about before. We started in 2007, 2008, when the commission adopted the policy, 2009, no more Clark tanks, and from 2010, '14, we've only put in plastic tanks. One of the things that drove us in the top left-hand picture, that's a picture of a tank that's being delivered to the watershed. And you can see that there's some black stuff there on the right-hand side of the tank. That's not so much a problem, that's some kind of seal or butt around the seal, or you can see where we've got water leaking out. When we started to see that, that's when we decided we ought to go and check the tanks at the lot. The bottom left-hand picture is a tank on the Clark lot, it's been filled with water the evening before we arrived, and you can see where it's circled, that water is leaking out of the tank. On the right-hand side, the far right, again, there's a tank that water's coming out of, but there are a couple of tanks that have EPA spray painted on that. That was sort of the good housekeeping sign of approval. If the tanks did not leak, we spray painted EPA on it, and then only those tanks would be allowed to come into the watershed itself. You can see these are great big tanks, because they're made of concrete, they're also very heavy, so you have to have big equipment to lift them in and out and put them in the holes. At the bottom there, these tanks have a couple different openings in them. When we first started, the state said that you only had to have one opening uncovered. Nowadays, you have to have two openings uncovered, and as we get into some more slides, you'll see how the fact that one of those two openings was covered with dirt has caused us a problem. Basically, this is how the system works. Picture on the top, you've got your house on the far left, followed by a septic tank. These are two compartment septic tanks. Then with most of these systems that we're talking about, the next thing that comes is a pump tank that pumps the affluent into those modules at the top. These are peat modules, they clean the affluent one more time, then it finally goes through a UV disinfectant light, and then these actually get deposited, the final affluent gets deposited in the creek because it's clean enough. The picture at the bottom, there's something circled there, that's supposed to be a baffle that's in each one of these septic tanks. And the purpose of the baffle is to keep your solids in the first chamber so that it doesn't get into the second chamber. Besides the fact that we're seeing some of these tanks crumbling, we're also seeing that some of these tanks, when they were put in, didn't have baffles, so they came from the prefabricator's site without baffles in it. So that adds to some of the problems we're having with these tanks as well. Why do we worry about leaking concrete tanks? Well, there's two kinds of things that happen. When the weather is dry and the soil is dry, the septic from inside the tank leaks out through the leaks, it gets in the water table and the wells and when the creeks, into the creeks. When the weather is wet and the ground is wet, groundwater from outside leaks inside of the tanks. If you get too much water inside of your tanks, you don't get proper breakdown, proper decontamination. The other thing that happens is if you have too much water in the tanks, it gets into the next part of the system, which is the peat system, and it's going to lessen the life expectancy of the peat, so it's not going to work. We have in the project 12 prefabricated concrete tanks that are Clark tanks. I just want to show you pictures of the Clark tanks. The top picture there, and these are, it tells you who the homeowner is, it tells you when the picture was taken. We were having some problems at Eric and Patty's. We thought that maybe the tanks were leaking, and so we put perforated pipe on the outside of where we thought the septic tanks were, in the ground. Filled the perforated pipes would die during a rainstorm, and then went back the following day and opened up the septic tank, and we saw the dye in the septic tank, which told us that the dye that we put in the ground had gone through the ground into the septic tank. Late this fall, we brought a little handheld camera and started reaching down inside the septic tank and taking pictures. We're not going down past the septic fluid itself, this is just from the fluid on up, so we don't really know what's happening further down. But these are, the rest of these shots you're going to see are pictures of the insides of the tank. That's an upper corner in the tank, and you can see what is happening, the sides of the tank, and the lid of the tank is crumbling, and so that's letting in groundwater so the tank isn't working the way it's supposed to work. Here is another example of leaking tanks. This is at least an Obed Clay's, and I mentioned how originally the tanks had two lids and one of the lids wasn't open. That picture at the top is a lid that's been covered with soil and dirt, and now, as we've got a lot of water, the water and the dirt are both coming down inside of the tank. Here's another home where we've got a tank. In March 2009, Rick Hertz, who's the head of DHHR's on-site wastewater department, checked this tank. He was really the first to innovate this little camera technique. He took a picture of Vicki Watkins' tank in 2009, it had this hole in it. He sent some correspondence to Bill Clark's company, asking them to get the tank fixed. We went back in January in 2012, and we've got the same hole that's still there. This is another hole that was in Vicki's tank. This is from, and the same thing happened. In 2009, it was discovered, nobody did anything. Let me see if I can get this white one out of there. Sorry for the PowerPoint problem. So this is another one from Vicki's. Michelle Cooper's, another place where we had a tank. The upper top on the left, you can see how there's a hole out of the tank. The bottom shot, you've got, this is where the baffle's supposed to be, you can see the tank walls crumbling. Danny Clark's, top picture shows again where you've got crumbling in the tank, you've actually got roots that are beginning to come in. The bottom picture, you can see different layers of discoloration as you go up. This is inside the pump tank, and it shows you how the level of the effluent in the tank has gone from the normal level where it is now to an extremely high level, and that's because of the infiltration of the water. Danny Collins has two tanks at his place, he's got one that's upstream and one that's downstream. Again, we've got leaking holes in both of those. Franklin Terry's, another instance where we've got holes in tanks. Kenneth Collins, we've got a hole in his tank. We haven't really figured out what this duct take-like substance is that's there, or what function it's supposed to be solving. And Gary White's, where we have another hole in the tank. So we've got 12 homes. One of them is an in-ground low-pressure pipe system, that tank is leaking. Six are peat systems that are direct discharge, those tanks are leaking. One is a Quonix foam fuse system, that tank's leaking. Three are in-ground stone beds, those are leaking, and one is a drip system, and that's So unfortunately, the results from our evaluation are not very good. After the last meeting, the commission asked me to contact Bill and to share with him the report that we've written about the one home. We also invited Bill to meet with the commission before this meeting. We also invited him to come, I don't think somebody from Clark's is in the audience. We got one email back from him after that, asking us to explain what the problems were and whether we checked anybody else's tanks, and we explained that, but we haven't, haven't had any kind of response. So Ryan and I have talked about all this, talked about what steps might be appropriate to take next, and here are a list of four recommendations that we'd like to make to the commission. One is that we'd ask that the commission ban all concrete tanks made by W.J. Clark in the county. Earlier, you banned them from the project, but we think it's important to keep them out of the county because it's not just, we feel it's not just this project where we've got the problems, but it's every place.
On the concrete tank, have you found any working progress?
There are some made by some other manufacturers that are.
But not Clark's.
But not Clark's, not yet. I guess we, there have been, often at the site, you've got two tanks, you've got a septic tank and then a pump tank. Sometimes the pump tanks, which are smaller and cylindrical, we haven't found leaks in those as much as we found in the septic. Seems like the ones that are square or the ones that are rectangular, those are the ones that are consistently leaking. The other thing we'd ask is that the commission instructed Ryan and myself to go and visit Clark face-to-face and ask them to send a representative from the company here to Hamlin to sit down with the commission and to discuss the idea of Clark removing all the concrete tanks from Phase 1 and replacing them with approved plastic tanks. The next thing we thought would be valuable would, if the commission would instruct me to share this PowerPoint with Charles Ray at Board Nymona. Most of those systems after the concrete tank are Board Nymona systems, and our feeling is that because the tanks are failing, it's jeopardizing the Board Nymona peat system. And the Board Nymona should be interested in trying to solve that problem. And the last thing would be, we'd ask the commission to instruct us to contact the people at DEP, Kathy Emery, who's the program manager for their Clean Water State Revolving Fund, which is where we've been getting the money for Phases 2, 3, and hopefully Phases 4, and ask her to bring together people from the DEP and the DHHR to look at this problem.
That license is very important.
I think it is.
Always important, but that license has to be a serious issue, needs to be dealt with statewide. Okay, we have four items listed here that's recommended by Rick that the commission adopt. Any further discussion on those? If not, I would entertain a motion to adopt those and follow through as Rick has requested.
Second.
Motion is second, being all yes votes, motion carries. We appreciate the work that Rick, you and Ryan have done on this because we had bad situation before we got the grant to try to correct it, and it seems like we got a lot of corrections done on a temporary basis, but we have demonstrated here lots of issues that need to be dealt with. Sad, really.
Yes, yeah, it is. It's unbelievable, really.
Any kind of money, I mean, we're spending big dollars.
Yep. I'd like to switch hats if I could and talk about the counseling project and Phil Lund voice here. Okay. I guess he's there if you have any questions.
I will make it a little bit.
Okay, I'd like to talk about this school system counseling program. This doesn't have anything to do with wastewater. This is something totally different. In 2008, the school system got a three-year grant to hire 13 counselors for the nine schools that we had in 2008. We were... We were, I think, the only school in the state of West Virginia to get, this was a federal education department grant. We were the only school to get this grant. We got both a grant for the elementary schools and a grant for the high schools. And the funding went from 2008 to 2011. In, for this year, there were, in 2010, 2011 school year, the Board of Education found money to continue the counselor program. As we're moving now to the 2011, 2012 school year, the school system has been, feels that they don't have enough money to continue the program, so they are going to eliminate or combine many of these counselor positions. Those of us like Bill, other people.
If you would like to make a call.
Who have worked with the counseling program are really concerned about the negative kind of effects it's gonna have not to have these counselors at our schools. And some of the things that we've shared with the commission have to do with the key ways that the counselors have impacted our kids and our school system. One of them is reducing unexcused absences.
A call has been forwarded to an automatic voice message system, 3-0.
We've measured kids who miss five or more unexcused absences during the year. Kids have excused absences, they gotta go to the doctors, you know, there was a funeral, something like that, but we're talking about unexcused absences. In 2010, countywide, there were 1,154 kids who missed five days of school or more. One of the goals of the counseling program has been to decrease that. In 2011, there were only 572. So there was a drop of 50% in the kids who were missing lots of school, the worst absentee kids. The other thing we looked at was those kids, how many days of school did those kids miss? In 2010, those kids who missed five days or more, missed 15,685 days of school in 2010. In 2011, it had dropped to 8,254 days of school. So it was a 47% drop. One of the things we thought was important was to look at what this costs the county and the county, the state of West Virginia doesn't have a dollar set on per-day loss, but when we looked at other states, we came up with an average of $20 per student per day loss. So the county saved between 2010 and 2011, $148,620 in decreasing the number of days that kids were out of school. The other thing that we looked at was dropouts in grades 7 through 12. Before the, we got the counselors in, at the end of 2006, we had 64 kids drop out of school. End of 2007, we had 53 kids drop out of school. End of 2008, we had 62 kids drop out of school. We started the counselor program. 2009, we had 45 kids. 2010, we had 23 kids. 2011, we had 32. So we had this trend of decreasing the kids who dropped out of school. We estimated that if you look at that, it's about 30 kids fewer who dropped out of school pre-counseling program, after counseling program. The State Board of Education gives the county $5,500 per student each year. So if you think about these 30 kids who dropped out of school, the county's losing $165,000 when these 30 kids dropped out. Or look at it a different way, by keeping these 30 kids in school, they gained $165,000. The cost of keeping these counselors, moving them back up to 12, is, it's expensive, it's $300,000. But those of us who've been working on it feel that what we saved in kids not missing school, $148,000, and what we saved in kids not dropping out of school, $165,000, makes up for what you might have to pay for those students. The other thing we think is real important is the cost to our society when kids drop out of school. One of the things we know is that the dropout rate, that the unemployment rate for school dropout is twice that of the general population and the dropouts are more likely to commit crimes, abuse drugs and alcohol, becomes teenage parents, live in poverty, commit suicide, all those things, if you drop out of school, your chances of that are increased. So what we're trying to do now is we're trying to raise money to keep these counselors in. We're doing it on a couple fronts. One thing we've done is we're accepting money from anybody here in the audience. At this point, we've raised $3,110, that's not a whole lot of money, but we're just getting started and we're hoping that we can show that Lincoln County citizens want to keep these counselors in. The other thing we're talking about is going to the Department of Education, going to the governor, working with our legislatures to see if this program, if it's only been in Lincoln County, whether we can get at the state levels some money to continue it. We'd also like the county commission to consider helping us financially if we need to. You know that you're not into the time for budgets yet, but it may be that we ask if, let's say the governor says, I'll give, we ask the county commission to match the governor or one of them or something like that, but.
Well, it's a serious issue, of course. I can just speak about one counselor, the one that they had, my grandkids are out here at elementary schools. Money well spent, super, she just helped that school in all kinds of ways, the kids all kinds of ways, just a super person.
I don't know whether Bill wanted to.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, what's, we're really in a critical situation here because we had this grant and this year is the closeout and you can't reapply for a grant until everything's closed out. So next year, we can reapply for this grant. We may get it, we may not, but that's a critical area that we're looking at, trying to make it through this next school year so we can reapply for that grant. And also, there's been some talk about when the levy come up next time, include some of these positions, counseling positions in the levy. Just last week, I think Charleston paper had a couple articles about their levy and their levy, they included the counselors in that levy. So we're really hoping we can make it through this year and then reapply for the grant and I think the levy comes up in a couple of years so that we'll have that opportunity to keep the counselors and not only, when we got to go out and was able to hire, I think, six or seven new counselors and we got ready to hire them, we thought, how in the world are we gonna find six or seven quality counselors? And every one of them is, as Mr. McCann says, is just like Katie at Hamlin Elementary. We have quality people and what's sad too is that they've been offered other jobs. Some of them live in the county, some of them don't. They were offered other jobs in other counties and they wouldn't leave and then just to find out that they, their position was cut. And they wanna stay here. They love it here and they love our kids, so, and we wanna keep them. Thank you.
Our budget will be coming up here in March, so I'm sure we'll have this information and feel free to bring us any other information.
Thank you. People in the audience are interested, there's some listening.
Thank you, Rick. All right, we lost you, we're just trying to touch, catch you back again.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I guess Lincoln County's not the only place with a body cell phone service.
Yeah? All right, we're fixing to go down, we're under whole business, down to the Hartz Community Center.
Okay.
Okay, next thing on the agenda, the Hartz Community Center. Commissioners, I've received two letters here, one from Tracy Dempsey de Sasser and Jerry Bowman Scher concerning laptop computers at the Feralburg Community Center where they do tax collection. And the computer system that we have there is kind of outdated and they're hoping that we can get some laptops so that in case we do move our location to another site, that they can just take the laptops or any other systems that they have.
Do they have a price there?
No reason to have a price listed.
Entertain a motion to buy these computers.
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. All yes, motion carries. Thank you.
Next thing on the agenda is the Corcoran Community Center. Lawrence, you have anything to share?
I don't think so.
Good evening. We are making progress at the Corcoran Community Center and we have listed several things that we've done in the past month. We have had contractor visit to review the parking lot, is, to get back with the commission about it. We have got some, there was two coolers that were broken down and Scott was able to combine to make one, so we have a cooler that is working, the water heater was replaced, a soda machine has been ordered, fire extinguishers have been installed, the signage for the building has been submitted to the commission. We are still investigating getting our floors buffed out. We're working with Rees to extend the internet service in the building for our GED study group and to accommodate the early voting that's scheduled to be there. We have also cleaned out that office room to allow for the early voting to be in there where they can keep everything locked up and secure. The GED study group is meeting regularly on Thursday evenings now. A calendar has been put on our Facebook page to allow the public to know what dates are still available. We do have the center rented out as far out into 2012 is October. We have Valentine social planned for February the 11th from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. And the center has been donated a piano and we are working to get people to help us move that to the center. We also purchased a printer that has been used at the center. And new items on February the 22nd, the Hatfield McCoy Trail is supposed to have a public meeting there at 6:00 p.m.
I was looking, what about the water fountain? Do we ever get that fixed or is this?
Yes.
I don't know what you said. I told you I thought so.
Sharon, you have anything for the outreach?
I have nothing for him. I handed in to you the volunteer sheets for the last month and the, how many we serve. And we will be getting trucks Monday, or Truck Monday, I don't think it's gonna be Tuesday. So we are gonna be closing at 1:30 on Monday to prepare for the truck that will be there about 7:30 or 8 o'clock Monday night. And we will be closed Tuesday to take care of all that.
I appreciate your work, both of you.
If I want to help on my trucks, we don't want to. We never say.
Next thing on the agenda is the Healthy Initiative. It's a program that our employees here at the courthouse were trying to encourage healthy living by eating better, exercising, losing weight, and we have had some employees, I think he's standing out in the hallway, that has quit smoking, which the commission will reimburse him for his, I think, patches that he is on. And our next weigh-in is on the 16th of February. On to new business, I need a motion to prove the bills are submitted for payment.
So moved.
Motion is second, is that correct? All yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to prove exoneration orders submitted by Tracy Dempsey de Sasser.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, is it all yes, motion carries?
I need a motion to prove a donation in the amount of $500 to the Lincoln County High School Junior ROTC for a winter drill season.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, is it all yes, motion carries?
I need a motion to accept the resignation of Chad Chandler as full-time home incarceration officer that, that were the first 2012.
Motion is your second.
Second.
Motion is second, all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to prove the small cities block grant contract binding between the West Virginia Development Office and Lincoln County Commission for the Big Hartz Water System Improvement in the amount of $500,000 and give Charles S. McCann President Authorization to sign this stated contract.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to prove the appointment standing vacation Lincoln County Commission and Donald C. Whitman clerk.
So moved.
Is there a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to prove a drawdown request, number one, in the amount of $4,000 from the Governor's Community Participation Program and the certification of completion for the Hartz Youth Sports League and give Charles S. McCann President Authorization to sign this stated documents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to prove the drawdown request, number three, in the amount of $215 from the Governor's Community Participation Program.
I really messed up the last time that you was there.
I need a motion to prove the drawdown request, number three, in the amount of $215 from the Governor's Community Participation Program for the Central Crime Watch and give Charles S. McCann President Authorization to sign this stated documents.
So moved.
Now, motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to appoint Linda Whitman as fiduciary commissioner for the estate of Calista Huffman.
So moved.
Motion is second, all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to adopt electronic voting system security policy as presented by Donald C. Whitman clerk.
So moved.
Motion is there a second? Motion is second, all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to prove, Alan, do you wanna speak upon this? Is he in here?
I didn't see him.
Okay, I need a motion to prove the RFP by CRS for a digital logging recorder for the Lincoln 911 is requested by Alan Holder, Director.
There he is.
Got a motion and a second to adopt the digital logging recorder. Alan's gonna talk about that a little bit and then some other issues. Is there an all yes vote on that for the, all yes, motion carries?
The current recorder that we're requesting just replaces the one that we have now. We're limited to 24 channels, we've exceeded that with the new digital channels that we've added in the center recently. In addition, the service record on the current machine has got to the point where it's started to give us some issues and this is just basically a new piece of equipment that replaces one that's wearing out.
And it did cost a whole lot of money or just a little bit?
Well, they gave us a very good deal as part of the trade-in and we worked with them and they, seventeen, seventeen something on there, almost $18,000.
And on the letter, it wasn't on the agenda, it was my ass. I remember you said, good piece of equipment, pretty expensive, but it should last a while.
Well, we, you know, we went from having for years, five police EMS phone lines and that was it. Well, the last year with all of the channels going digital, we've had 10 or 12 more channels that we need to start recording and we've just kind of been waiting on something like this, you know, the new recorder before we could migrate everybody over to the law enforcement, digital law enforcement, fire and make that transition.
Alan, why don't you, let me just ask you something. We were talking about these cell coverage, cell towers, plenty of that nature, we've had several meetings and one, what I need, I don't know if you have one or not, but an area coverage map, what is covered in cell service here in the county, where the deficient areas are, can you put anything like that together?
The sales companies are very, very reluctant to show any actual engineering studies of where their coverage is. We could easily plot on a map where the, where the coverage is or where the towers are for the companies that we've done addressing for or we've done licenses and permits for. We can tell you where they all are, but I can tell you, we're still looking probably better than 70% of the county doesn't have coverage and we have worked very hard to market the Hartz site and the thing that I was told most recently was that they felt like they needed a couple more sites between there and Chapmanville. They didn't wanna create a bunch of pockets without creating the ability to seamlessly go into an area and not have calls dropped two or three times. And I know in 2007, myself and several from the county met with AT&amp;T, we went down there, we videotaped the site and most of those companies have put the majority of their funds and the majority of their money in not upgrading and building new towers, but upgrading the existing infrastructure for faster data and better service than what they've got. I don't know that we've done a building permit in the county in four or five years for a cell site. a cell site. They did come through the county, maybe within the last year, they approached me down at the 911 center about something there and there was some discussion about building another tower site between the center part of Hamlin and Route 34 somewhere because there's a dead spot down in that area as you're going down 34. I would have preferred to have seen that somewhere else in the county where there was zero coverage, but I know that was discussed and I was told they were close to a land deal, but whoever they're striking the land deal with on that's not it, not us. I'm not sure who in the county they've approached, but I understand somebody is in negotiation with that right now. But I'll be happy to provide you with a map of what we've got.
That would really be good because it's really, it's really hard when I say, I can say there's 70% of these people don't have cell service and that, and that Mr. Kenny found, Kenny found out I don't even have a cellphone because of that because I know most of the places in the county, you know, they're useless. Now, we're talking about safety issue and I think we need to get a little more aggressive in talking to these people in that manner and I know you have, but I, I just think that if we had a map and said, okay, look how much of this county doesn't have the ability to, if they run off the road and have an accident to call 911 or whatever, then I think that may, may impress them a little more. It may not, but I mean, I think we're going to have to have this situation addressed in this county and we, as we get, we want people to live here and live better lives. You've got to know that if you, if you wreck or if you're, if something happens at your home and you can't, don't have, well, which, you know, if they take the copper, you don't have any landlines and things like that, you know, we, we really need, and I know we've addressed people going to particular places and calling from those places and things, but somewhere along the line, I'd just like to see, you know, and I know we have, but I think we need to be unified and say, let's go to the governor and say, you know, these things need to be accomplished. We need to start them, even if it's just certain areas. What we could do is look at areas not served to have the greatest number of population there, it's not, you know, and, and look at those areas first and then go from there.
That, that, that gives me an idea. I'm, I will approach our state, I'm in one county, we meet tomorrow and I will see if we've developed any numbers statewide as far as, say X county has 70% coverage, X county has 30% coverage. I know there's a few counties in the state that have almost zero coverage in the eastern part of the state next to the Green Bank Quad Zone, but there are some other counties. I'd like to see how we compare with the other counties in the state.
Well, especially looking at the population you're dealing with in those counties, you know, I know, you know, in, in the areas I'm talking about, we're talking about big population groups that, you know, don't have cell service and, and, and I, you know, we don't buy cellphones here because we've got to go into Marverson and other places to buy them and things, but I just really think there needs to be more awareness and we maybe need to do a better job with the state and say, look, we can't continue like this, you know, and if, if, if nothing else, if it saves one life in a year, we've done good with it. And, and I know that you being a physician and trying to treat these people that are involved in things, the quicker you get to them, the quicker they get to you, the better off you are. So I really think this is something we really need to, I know the EDA is, is working on it also, but I, I do think that as much information as we can get to go to them and talk to them, I think better off.
Well, if we get some numbers and know where we stand, then maybe we can at least get a commission resolution to that effect and then hand deliver it to the cellular companies.
Say it's a matter of a practical private business decision is what they tell me, they're trying to look at as a paid invest. The only one I know is pending right now is White Griffithsville. They are, they have a five-year lease on a piece of property there, but they haven't made any.
But they had that five-year lease for probably eighteen months.
Three years, three, maybe three years. Something like it. It's in the process of protest.
That was right there above the high school and I guess it's public knowledge where it was at.
Yeah, it's up on the hill there.
And, you know, we're told it's over a million dollars investment and it just depends on how much traffic and how much volume there is, but the one argument that I always make is that Route 10 is still considerably traveled between the southern part of West Virginia and Huntington and it doesn't matter where, whether the population supports cellphone coverage in that area or not, the traveling public supports it by itself if nobody lived in that area.
With the addition of the opening of the Hatfield McPooy Trail system here in Wayne County, it's only increased your traffic up Route 10, too, from the west.
I'll get you some numbers and we can look at where we compare with the other counties and go from there.
What about, when you had the, how's the chopper helicopter?
Well, I brought some pictures, that way you all could actually see what this week looked like on the hill. This week, we have started playing gas or having a vista from Health Net. Health Net has been coming down to Hamlin during the day primarily for the day shift and staying for the 12-hour half of the day. We're working very hard to recruit them to the farm on a 24-hour basis. They're looking at something on a 24-hour basis down there. They're also looking at maybe helping us develop a landing pad that would be both available for Health Net, military helicopters, state police helicopters and everything at this point, but by taking that helicopter and putting it in the middle of the community where people need it, there's no doubt in my mind that it's going to save lives in southern West Virginia and reduce pain and suffering. So we'll, we, they've been fairly busy throughout the week. They're staying in one of the conference rooms in the, in the 911 center upstairs and we're trying to, trying to roll out the red carpet and be as cordial as possible because we think it's by all means the best for the county to have them there.
All right, anything else?
That's all I have unless you all have additional questions from there.
What about the, does anybody want to touch on the LEPC meeting and how we're doing there with emergency planning?
Well, the LEPCs had several meetings over the last few months. I'm not sure if the letter or the motion that was passed the other night's made at the commission yet. Probably not. I don't think it was already ready, but they're ready to start soliciting for some funds and they're going to ask the commission to assist with managing those funds as far as at least keeping, keeping that account for them so that they don't have to go out and go through a 501(c)(3) status as far as going out incorporating and doing all that because the LEPC is, is basically an entity of the commission. We've got a drill plan in conjunction with the fire school, doing the communications drill with all the public schools across the county. That's scheduled for later in February, so there's a lot of things starting to take place with that. And since you mentioned that, we have seen considerable movement on the digital radio system that the state is building with the two sites in Lincoln County, the Harts site and the Samarico site, both of those with considerable installation done within the last few months. Both of the sites have the microwave completed and should be on the air within the next few months, which at this point, pretty much all of our law enforcement, with the exception of the two municipalities, are using the digital system and using it for the majority of their traffic. EMS is using it probably 90% of the time and hopefully will be successful on a grant that we have asked for, for the fire service, which we bring them when we're moving forward with that also.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I need a motion to prove the appointment of Larry Polly as a replacement for Pauline Porter as a Republican early voting worker at Hearts as requested by Lisa Paul, excuse me, Ramey.
So moved.
Now, motions are second.
Second.
Motion and second. Oh, yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to prove a donation to the Duval Elementary Middle. Is Tina still here? Do you want to talk to them before we do this?
I can do it real fast.
Okay.
Welcome, Tina.
Hi, I'm Tina Atkins and I'm a teacher at Duval Elementary Middle School. I teach third grade and we are the first school in Lincoln County to be invited to attend the Challenger Learning Center in Wheeling, West Virginia. And the Challenger Learning Center was created by NASA to honor the astronauts that were killed in the Challenger Shuttle explosion and the Challenger Shuttle had the first teacher astronaut onboard and we've been invited to attend that. It is a long drive up to Wheeling, so we were hoping to get a coach bus to go. We've received grant money to cover our admission costs to the Challenger Learning Center of $750. We've solicited some donations from some local businesses and we've been successful for about $300 of that, but we're still lacking about $1,800. We were hoping to have the coach bus also provide the students their lunches. As most of you know, over 75% of Lincoln County is high poverty. Most of our students get free and reduced lunch and we don't want any of the students to not be able to attend the trip due to not being able to afford to pay. West Virginia content standards are all followed at the Challenger Learning Center. It's a real-world experience where the kids get to apply what they've learned. You hear kids all the time say, when will I ever use this? Well, the Challenger Learning Center shows them, this is what, how and when you could learn it, use it in everyday life. They get to be astronauts for the day, scientists and engineers. We actually have to teach them several activities before they go that are all based on West Virginia content standards and objectives and we were hoping that maybe the county commission could help us a little with the donation.
We weren't sure all the time, so when we began, I put down $500, but if that's helpful, good, but need more, maybe the commission will consider more. When's the deadline you have to?
We need everything turned in by March the 1st. We go in April, on, on April the 19th.
Why don't we go ahead and approve this and we meet again the 16th, so maybe communicate with us prior to that.
Okay.
I'll go ahead with the motion.
You got a motion, is there a second?
Yes, I second.
Motion and second for approved $500.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, motion carries. Good luck. Sounds like a real program.
Okay, next thing on the agenda is public comments. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak at this time but is not on the agenda?
Are you finished with the agenda?
No.
No, just in case there's somebody that didn't get all the ends or one of the agenda talked about some issue, we always just do that as a normal thing. We've got still a few things to do. Yes.
I'd like to ask for some clarification about the motion that was just voted on and approved about the appointments standing vacation of the Lincoln County Commission by Donald Witten.
Are you asking what that is?
Correct.
That's if you have a will and you come in and the county commission appoint somebody, or the county clerk appoints someone that attaches to the will and that's a vacation of the Lincoln County Commission.
I also have two other questions. I live in the Hearts area and we used to have a daycare there and people want to know why was the daycare closed because there was a grant that came out after the daycare was closed and they want to know what the reason for the daycare closing was and where did the grant money go?
Yeah, the grant money was used, we have a financial breakout of the center up there and basically was losing lots of money and, and the participation just kept decreasing rather than the surveys early in, you know, four years ago or something indicated that was their top project. They weren't in that community and, but I don't know what all the reasons were, but it just didn't work out. I think that we just had too many staff there, that's what the state wanted to in order to take care of the kids and things. We do have another person I've spoken with twice that's interested in trying to open another daycare up there. Once the school board decides how and when they're going to, you know, put the buildings up, the new proposal they have, they're not sure how they're going to put that forth and we're not, as a commission, we just don't know yet how we want to react to whatever they propose as far as the, the old Hearts High School becoming a, a community center. And so our goal is to have one community center, either the one we have now or possibly moving to the Hearts. There, we've put a written proposal to the superintendent school and they are considering how to work through that because it's going to be one of those things that there may have to be a contract drawn up because they want to use some of the facilities still there, the ball field, the dressing rooms and the gymnasium and maybe a space for bus drivers to meet. We've had some dialogue, but, but anyway, we are waiting to see how that may progress and, and of course, wanting to see what the upkeep of that building is going to be. The one we're, right now, at the, at Pearlburg, the Hearts Veterans Community Center is costing us a, a great deal. Of course, we know that there's no installation, we get a little bit of money in, but the, it's definitely one of those things that if the service is worth it to the community, then, you know, we're trying to provide it, but it's not without going in the hole far as spending money. It's just one of those things, I mean, just those buildings are big buildings and the Hearts building is going to be even bigger. So we've got several things we talk to people about, Prestier particularly, look at the Hearts school and see if they have some way of, maybe have some interest. Bob Hanson, I spoke with him and basically, you know, the interest is there and if I can find some money, but what we proposed to him, maybe take one of those wings and put in some type of, you know, drug rehab, something that's needed in the community. So we're just still looking, but I suspect something will move between now and summer on that.
The other question I had was about the citizens that live on Mansa and trial fort are, still do not have their water and they wanted me to ask the commission, do you know any tentative dates, any plans?
Well.
I mean, they've been promised water for a long time and they still don't have it.
Well, the, the money's in place and it's one of those things that the, one of the issues I want to report directly on is that the project that was bid out is pretty much finalized and, but we did seek to increase the amount of water that we'll be producing and bring in more customers on the Mansa and also on trial fort. And that money is all in place. Logan PSD has a plan and I don't know if Mr. Ramey wants to speak to it or not, but he attended the PSD meeting, I don't know, three weeks ago or something and they didn't give a status on that. Are you with us, Mr. Ramey?
Yes, at that particular meeting, Mr. Bates and with the Logan PSD made it perfectly clear that everything is in place for the extension of water to Mansa and trial fort. The only holdup has been this is a self-help project and the Lincoln County Commission's already given the PSD the money in Logan, but the money is in place. However, since it's a self-help project, the Logan PSD is using their own employees, their own equipment to, to run the line. So currently that, the equipment and the employees are tied up in a project ongoing in, in Logan, but as soon as that project is complete, the next project on their calendar is to bring that equipment to Mansa and the trial fort. His goal was to have the equipment there by the first or second week of February. He told me there's no problem, it's just having to wait until they get their equipment and the men free to, to be able to get in that area.
Okay, and I think we have one other project over on Big Uggins we have the money for that's just going to go a couple miles down Big Uggins.
Why am I not on there?
I don't know, Judy's been on field at back surgery, but I don't know.
I was not given here.
I didn't see you. So if you want to address it, go ahead.
I'd like to, Dr. Vance, I'd like to thank you for one politician with a microphone to stand up against all these people when they treated you like a dog. Why you didn't give up, I don't know, but I certainly appreciate it. Same name, Percy Simms, I appreciate it. Charles didn't treat you very good. Lisa, thank you too, and Phoebe Harless and everybody. And I have one more question. Now, $25,000 you took from the horse plug, saddle plug? Rumor has it that the three over here is not going to be here much longer. I was just wondering what the $25,000 is that?
Well, it's still invested.
How much do we have in it now and what's it invested?
Judy said it's up to $37,000. It's just on an interest-bearing account that has been since the inception.
Do you have any plans? You ever going to do anything with it?
Yeah.
You going to give it to the saddle plug, back to the state or what are you going to do?
Well, that would be a commission decision, but we have, are working with.
The agenda or not?
No.
I call.
Indicated and got an agreement drawn up. Once they leave the various branch areas, they're going to leave us some 100 acres.
Everybody's horses done die, it's been over 10 years.
Do you want to answer? Don't interrupt me again.
Okay, go ahead. Okay, go ahead. You got the vote?
Yes. We have plans to see if we can get that camping ground out there. And we also have asked the governor to look into the possibility of making Mud River Dan into a state park with the idea of working with Hatfield McCoy to open it up for horseback riding. We certainly are working towards that and a letter is on the governor's desk requesting consideration for that. But other than that, that's the only thing that I know about that's going on right now. But the money is still there.
Is it true that you're under investigation, mode of thought?
Not to my knowledge. I mean, no, sir. Are you?
No, I didn't talk to anybody, so they don't investigate me.
Well, I mean, I, if you're here to conduct business, let's conduct it. Let's not get personal.
Precisely what I was expecting. I'm not getting personal.
Well, you are when you do that.
Yeah, but you try to treat me like you do Percy and your group and like Doc and all of them, but it don't work. I've been here for ten years, but.
You want to be removed or sit down?
Oh, I've been removed before.
That's where we run business, it has to be business.
Yeah, but those are you run business in Lincoln County.
Is there any more? Onto commission concerns. Mr. Vance?
The first thing I have is a request. I met with Jason Moore yesterday and we have some firefighters in here, know where you're moving. This is a letter he sent to us. Dear Lincoln County Commissioners, this year the Boone County Firefighters Association, both the Logan County Firefighters Association, excuse me, and the Boone County Firefighters Association have joined together to host the West Virginia State Firemen's Association Annual Convention. This convention is scheduled for August sixteenth, seventeenth, eighteenth of two thousand and twelve. And we'll be holding the convention at the Earl Ray Tomlin Convention Center in Logan, West Virginia. As you are aware, events like this are extremely costly. We'd like to ask for your support with hosting this event. Along with your support, we would like to request a donation from the commission to help the cost of the convention. If you're interested in donating, please contact Mr. Moore at the Hartz Volunteer Fire Department and he gives his contact information. And talking with him a bit, I think he said this was probably going to cost the three counties somewhere around thirty-five thousand dollars. So that kind of gives us an idea of how, if we want to participate, what members were talking about. The second thing I want to address is, number one, I want to thank Mr. Miller and I want to thank everyone that, everyone that's been involved. I wanted to address the situation because it's been brought up to me several times about replacing the sheriff when he resigns. How many sheriff candidates do we have in here right now? Mr. Foyle, Mr. Mullins, and your Republican, Ms. Ramey. I'd like to tell them and the public now that I won't be supporting any of them to replace the sheriff. I don't feel, I think it gives you an unfair advantage if you're put in as an incumbent when you have five or six other Democrats running against you. And being a prior Democratic chair, I don't think that's fair. It's, it would be my intent to vote only for someone that's not a candidate. I would, and I'd also like to suggest that the commission consider elevating the chief deputy who already knows law enforcement, already knows what the town situation is, to assume that position if it, when it becomes available till the end of the term that the new sheriff will take. And I don't do this to try to start, cause problems. I really think this is the fair thing to do, it's fair to everyone, and I hope the commission will consider that when it comes up. Thank you.
You want to address that, that you can?
I'd just like to say that I appreciate that, Mr. Vance, but I'm not in a position where I could accept that.
Well, and I, and I realize that may be a problem, but it doesn't necessarily have to be you. I think if we want to be, you know, someone in the sheriff's department would be following with me. I just don't think any candidate running for sheriff should be appointed to that position to have an unfair advantage to that. But I do appreciate that, thank you.
Well, I appreciate it. Putting my name out there, I was just officially, I'm not in a position where I could accept that even if that were the case.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate you mentioning my name, sir.
But I mean, there, you know, there are other people in that office that do that job. And I do think that it would be unfair to pick one of these candidates and put them in there and have them serve as an incumbent till the election.
True.
That's all I have.
Mr. Ramey?
Yeah, and I would have to agree with what Commissioner Vance said. I think at this time, it would be, it would be a wise move for the commission and the county of, if we would choose someone that's not a candidate on this year's ballot and we would pick someone that preferably they have some law enforcement background. In my report, very short, since I don't have my paperwork with me here away from home, but I did attend the healthy initiative kickoff and was very impressed with the number of county employees that showed up and expressed their interest in getting healthy, stopping smoking and just having a healthy life, a healthy attitude. I also spoke with the fire chief of Hartz, Jason Moore, and Jason was requesting that we send him and the other commission, the other volunteer fire department across the county, a copy of the resolution on the insurance premium that we passed, so that they have a past copy that we have all signed off on. And the only other thing I'd like to say at this point is, over the last few weeks, I've been coming to the commission office and trying to help because Judy Johnson's been off due to having surgery on her back. And I just would like to express my appreciation for Wanda Clay. Wanda held the office together and she did a fabulous job while Judy was off. And I just think that she deserves a pat on the back. And at this point, that's all I have.
Thank you. I have a three or four out of cheering, that's a great deal, but the West Virginia Association of Counties held their annual meeting twenty-second, twenty-third of January. I did go up to those meetings Sunday and Monday, they were in Charleston, just one of the day sessions. In that, we were provided the opportunity to meet some of the leaders of our legislature as far as the Senate and the House. They came and spoke about the bills and the views from how it affects county commissions. Also, we've got a status report on how counties need to be aware of these, they call it the OED, but it's these post-employment costs that's going to hit counties as far as insurance. We're somewhat in the middle on that, but we have been, one of those counties that belong to PEIA, so we're not sure we are aware of it and have worked on it, but we're not sure at this time how the deal was. Of course, at that meeting, we heard tonight, our risk pool people, they were there and talked to counties that were our members and also trying to sign up other counties. January the twenty-thirty-first, attended the Farmland Protection Board meeting representing the county commission. And we heard from our geologist that we have under contract, and basically the Farmland Protection Board is trying to achieve a goal of protecting some farmland in Lincoln County. The idea is to look at the farms out there and talk with the people who own them and see if there's interest in preserving their farm forever. And the way the project works is that there's a two percent fee levied on all, excuse me, all transactions on deeds here in that county. And the farmland board takes that money, keeps it in the bank, keeps it invested. The idea is that there's a state farmland protection, it's also a national or federal, and there's money there on the same type of deal. And the idea is across the country is to make sure that the people who want to preserve their farms have that opportunity. We have two in Lincoln County that have stepped up and asking the farmland board to look at. One of the things that, in this particular area that, talking about Lincoln County, is the oil, gas and coal. One of the things that the farmland board at the state level and federal level are concerned about is that you do not go out here and put down a lot of money to purchase a farm to preserve it and then coal operation or some mineral owner comes in and disturbs it. So they have some rules on that. And that's where the geologist is right now, looking at the, pretty much finish one parcel and looking at the second parcel's step forward. But the, the idea behind it is that the owner of the farm is able to determine a value of that farm, be able to be paid for that farm and then live there for the rest of, you know, life and family on and on and on, but as long as it's preserved as a farm. And so it's one of those things that farmers can get his money for the value of the property as long as they agree that it'll always be a farm. So that's basically the idea, for rich here or not, but he's more the student that's one of the board members, but.
He gave us plenty of credit.
On the evening of January the third of first, I did attend the meeting at nine-one-one on the emergency commission and several emergency planning people. And basically, we heard Alan talk there and seemed to be like the biggest concern down in Lincoln, in the Lincoln LEPC was communications. We've heard about, you know, cell towers and all that. Well, across the county, where it's firefighters, police or animals, whatever, communications is very important. And so that's the thing that Alan kept talking about, how they're improving their radios and are going to be able to do better with that part of it. February the first, working with Commissioner Vance, Commissioner Ramey on the phone, we held our first meeting of the annual tax board of equalization and we'll continue to do that and we'll meet again in the morning at nine o'clock.
All right.
Yes.
In the events of all the facts that have stepped forward in the past couple of weeks, since you all certified all this, do you want everyone to give the citizens of Lincoln County an apology for what has gone down and caused another black eye on their county?
I suspect it could happen at appropriate time.
But we do expect one, so.
Well, nobody loves Lincoln County more than I do. Anyone else?
Debated on whether or not I want to bring this up during this meeting, but I think this is actually the perfect time to bring this up. As an educator in this county, I think it's really important for us to really focus on the issue. And that's always going to be education, educating the public, educating our communities to have better information about what goes on in our communities. So, you know, I, the question I have is, these things are going on right now, of course, they're going to go on and they're going to be what they're going to be. But where are we going to be in two years? What are we going to be like in two years when the cameras are gone, the people in the courtroom here drop and everyday business goes bad? We're going to be sitting in a situation where we can make a decision right now to take the opportunity to start educating our students in this county on what are voters' rights? What is a magisterial district? What are the rules for the election process? Because when we start doing that, we are making a positive impact on this situation that, yes, it's not anything that any of us want to look at and admit that is going on, but it is. And so the best thing for us to do, instead of focusing on that, is to focus instead on the opportunities to bring voting machines into the schools and let the kids see what it's like to use those machines. Invite people in here, come on in, I have an education program. I can open up and do educational programming on voters' rights, magisterial districts, what are they? Because I'm sure we have a lot of people who may not necessarily know what that is. You know, what is a magisterial district? What are voters able to do? Why do we have the system in place that we have in place? How is it supposed to function? What's the history behind our rights as voters and how election processes run? What's the daily business of the commission? Parliamentary procedure rules. There are so many things that we can be educating our youth and our people on. And as much interest as I've seen in these particular issues, if these classes are opened up, then I would expect to see the same amount of interest in the classes. Because that's where we're going to solve this problem. You know, it's about coming up with solutions. We can roll over the problems all we want, but that's not going to change until we look at some positive solutions to this problem. So I'm open for any discussions that anybody wants to bring with me about putting together some kind of a plan so that in two years, we will be in a better place than we are now. And I think that's going to start with educating youth on what their rights are, what our responsibilities as citizens and community members are. And then carrying that out to the adults and the parents and the guardians and others that might be in the community, the teachers. And I see the counselors in the school systems being ideal for bringing a program like that into the school. You know, I agree with the idea to keep counselors and this is a prime, a prime program that they could bring. And I've worked with all of these counselors and I think they would be ideal to bring these kinds of programs into the schools. I want to educate my son, he's in seventh grade, that's my responsibility as a mother. The community is my responsibility as an educator. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm charged.
Charles, could you clarify why the sheriff's name and title was removed from his door, but the county clerk is still on his door? Just seems to be a bit of a disconnect.
I have no knowledge, really.
The instruction didn't come from you?
No, nobody talked to me about it.
Okay.
But getting back to a point April made there is that we always say we want good qualified people running for office. And one of the things I think is, a lot of us don't know what the offices are, what they do and things of that nature. I think teaching the kids as they grow up will take that fear factor out, will allow them to participate in electoral process, allow them to participate in politics. Then you have many more people with many more opinions forming your policy. That's all I have.
Okay. And one of the goals that we put out this year, we're about to lose Mr. Ramey, is there Mr. Ramey?
Yes, I'm here.
One of the goals we added this year to our goals we adopted last month was to make the county government try to educate, go into the school, bring kids into, in here we adopted last month, was to make the county government try to educate, go into the school, bring kids into, in here. Thank you. That concludes the meeting. I'll take a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
I'll say that. Moon is second? All yes, adjourned, seven fifty.